All right, good evening, welcome to the Burwick Planning Board meeting. This is a regular meeting for Thursday, March 5th, 2020. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Planning Board members present tonight, we have Frank Butterwood, we have Sean Winston, we have the Vice Chair Nicole Fekko, and Mike LaRue. Absent tonight is our alternate David Ross Lyons. We also have the Town Planner here, the Town Code Enforcement Officer, and members of the public. Moving on to the public comment session, it's open to any resident property owner in the town of Burwick to come forward and talk about anything that relates to the Planning Board. We are having a public hearing this evening on one application that is at 60 Route 236. So if you'd like to save your comments for then, feel free, but the public comment session's open. We'll have another public comment session at the end of the meeting, or just before the end of the meeting. So, public comment session's open, feel free to come forward. John West, John Place.
Please silence your phones.
Please close, I'll close the public comment session, moving on to the approval of the minutes for the February 20th, 2020 meeting. I like how James put in here, Dave Andreessen pointed out a typo. He didn't say what the typo was. And at least he didn't have a typo when he's, he did that last time.
Did that go around?
But I have no, I mean, I didn't see anything.
I didn't, I didn't see anything.
I'm good, I wasn't here.
The motion will be for the approval of the minutes.
What was the date? I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Board meeting minutes for Thursday, February 20th, 2020.
I'll second. Seconded, further discussion. All in favor? No's? Abstaining? Okay, so that's three and two abstaining, okay. Next is a public hearing, conditional use application, adult use marijuana storefront, 60 Route 236, map R 57 lot 55. It's in the RCI zone and the applicant is Silver Therapeutics. So, this is a chance for the public to come forward and talk about this application, and this application only. If you have any concerns or any questions, I'll write those questions and concerns down, and then, once we move on to discussing the application, we'll ask the applicant to address those concerns and those answers, those questions. So, public hearing is open. This is the public hearing for 60 Route 236, Silver Therapeutics. Anybody here tonight for this, besides you guys? Okay, seeing nobody come forward for the public here, we'll close the public hearing. And next is old business, conditional use application, adult use marijuana storefront, 60 Route 236, map R 57 lot 55. It's in the RCI zone and the applicant is Silver Therapeutics. I'll turn it over to Lee Jay, but you're free to come over.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board members. So, the proposal is that the project entails the redevelopment of 41,163 square foot lot, commercial property, an existing business is currently there, Pitbull Automotive LLC, and proposing a marijuana dispensary for Silver Therapeutics. The proposed improvements include redesign of the existing building for proposed business operations, redesign of the said building's entrance and driveway, formalizing parking, signage, and minor landscaping. The proposed facilities' hours of operation will be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week. Advancing the proposed facility, advancing the proposed facility design will require the conditional use permit, which is in front of you. The existing site is located on the northwest, northwest Burwick, six tenths of a mile, one point, .16 miles from the nearest intersection of Route 36, Burwick Road. Site has been used as a mechanic's garage previously. The garage itself is 1,467 square feet. The surrounding parcel space consists of gravel, driveway, three bay, two bays extending north to the surrounding land. Use under the characterized as a rural with a mixed commercial and industrial RCI zone. Completeness, the applicant has provided a great deal of information, however, staff did feel at the last meeting, which I did not attend, that there was information missing, and they have provided that information to the department, which would make this application complete at that point. And so, the recommendation at this time would be for the Board to be able to take the information in, which they did, from the public hearing, which there was none, and you could make a determination on that application this evening. There are draft findings in front of you. We do know during the site visit we had earlier this evening that one abutter was at the site and had some concern with some of the drainage coming off the site currently, and impacting the property adjoining this one.
Start with Frank.
Just a couple of questions. The second floor that was shown in the supplement information, is that the floor that's there now on the, or are you building an intermediate floor in their meeting? Are you going to have that same floor to ceiling height, as high as it is for those?
We're planning to keep it the same floor to ceilings.
Okay, so that's, that's using that top floor as your second?
Yeah, we will reconfigure the stairway, though.
Okay, and then, I recognize the drainage issue out there, too. It's a pretty flat site, so when I, after the meeting, I, the site walk, I looked, and the contour plan that we have, LA 200, shows some existing contours, but it really doesn't show anything that's proposed to try to shape that thing. And I think your abutter has a valid, has a valid concern about that sheet flow water that would be going off of that area. You are going to be working on that area as, in your combination of your pervious and your gravel areas. I'd like to see a little more effort into addressing that sheet flow drainage over there, and possibly swaling it. We had a similar situation up at 71 Sullivan Street where we had a gravel lot. Your abutter was quite concerned about that water coming onto her property, and they created some swales and some under drains in there to make sure they could capture it. So, if your engineer could look at that, and again, you couldn't read the topo on the sheet.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start by saying that we're absolutely open to installing some sort of burms. I do, however, think that the improvements that we're making to the site will help some of the existing conditions. The gravel driveway that's there is really just impacted and impervious as it is. The proposed pervious driveway, which, you know, we could talk about, too, I think will help some of that infiltration.
And I agree, it will help it, but if we could have a little bit more definition.
I think really even a very small berm would probably take care of the whole.
Right, so it would need to show on your plan, so it's something that we could.
Yeah, I had thought about that as well after the site walk, and in fact, I talked with the Chairman earlier. I think that certainly what you're suggesting along that, just off the edge of the new parking area, creating a swale that comes down into a larger pond area just behind the light station that's proposed, in that area, I think that would probably be enough to handle the water coming off that side of the site.
Because there's plenty of relief to release it down into the ditch line along Route 230.
Yeah, and if they did it as an LID design with some median material inside, you wouldn't have to have any overflow, you know, areas for the ponding. When it happens, it would just suck that water right down into the, into the site.
So, that LID, that would be additional credit towards that effort.
Exactly.
And then, the only other question that I had out there was whether they were registered with the state of Maine to do business, and all that is, all that is up and up.
Sean?
I think my concern is.
Can I just make one point on the registration? Just to be clear, the applicant is Silver Therapeutics of Burwick LLC. I know we're listed as Silver Therapeutics, Inc., which is, Silver Therapeutics, Inc. is a Massachusetts corporation, but the applicant, Silver Therapeutics of Burwick LLC, is a main corporation.
And you're, so you're registered, you have a designated agent and all of that as part of the thing?
Yeah, it's part of the record to make sure that the applicant is.
Okay, thank you.
I think, my comment, similar to Frank's, I know the original, and we talked about this at the site, there was discussion of permeable pavement.
Right.
And, like I said, out there, when we were talking about it, my experience with that has not been very good, from what I've seen. Tends to fail. It gets maintained for a little while, and then everybody forgets about it.
Right.
So, I would almost lean more towards more of a standard pavement with a drainage and a detention pond at that, you know, that corner, I guess, towards over where the well is.
Yeah, I have no objection to that.
Yeah.
If that's where the Board feels, we can make that.
I think that's just more, and more sustainable for you guys. You won't have to worry about getting somebody in to vacuum the pavement.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, you know, we propose the pervious, or the pervious pavement as, you know, some green infrastructure. If we can achieve the same goal with the swell, and then 100% address the neighbors' concern, which are legitimate, I think we can kill two birds with one stone.
And if you, and if you do look at that product that EJ Prescott puts out there, it's a, it's a cell containment system, and I think they call it a geopavement. It's actually a stone-filled plastic structure.
But you were talking about doing actually more of a traditional impervious.
Yeah, I would, I would think if we do a berm and drainage with a small detention pond, that I think then you could go with a standard asphalt.
Okay.
Right, in that area.
Okay.
That's it?
Yeah.
Nicole?
The only thing that I had was, I know that you added a fence to one side, to the left side of the property, if you're looking directly at it, and then you mentioned that you're going to do the same thing on the right-hand side.
Right, but there is a fence there, but we want it, we'll extend it.
There is a fence there, but you're going to, you're going to make it taller or put your fence there. Since you're going to have to make these changes to that anyway, I'd just throw that onto the plan as well.
Okay.
Anything else? Mike?
So, I agree with Frank and Sean. We were looking at that area, and I think that, you know, I think that traditional, you know, pond or whatever, retention area would be the best bet to address everything. And I'd just like to see on a plan before we move forward in approving the application, to see what your engineer comes up with.
Okay.
The only other thing I noticed here is it talks about these two storage cabinets on the back, when you look at the site plan.
I didn't see them there.
I didn't see them there either.
Well, because it says to be moved or something.
Relocated.
They've been, yeah.
Okay, so there will, so there'll be no outside storage?
Oh, no, that was just an existing condition.
Okay.
I mean, that's the way that I feel, I don't know, I'd like, you know, before we move forward on approving the application, so.
Yeah.
Just looking at the calendar here, next meeting's on the 19th of March. Would that be enough time for you and your engineer to work together?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and then talk to James and get on the next agenda?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is the public hearing closed?
The public hearing is closed, yes.
Okay, yeah, so we'll be back hopefully in a couple weeks.
Okay, yeah, just talk to James, get on the agenda, and we'll see you in a couple weeks, hopefully.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the state's so backed up on this.
Yeah, you got plenty of time.
Moving on to new business, conditional use application, substantial expansion, 541 Portland Street, map R 72 lot 7A. It's in the RCI zone, and the applicant is Ready Mix Corporation. Mr. Town Planner?
Mr. Town Planner does not have a memo on this, as Mr. Newtown Planner handled this for me, and I don't believe he, I think he provided some findings of fact that you have in your board. It was a simple, small addition to the side of the building, and it's my understanding that prior, that that use could have actually had a building permit issued without coming to the Planning Board several months ago. So, this one's in your hands, I apologize. I did not do the review. It's my understanding from James that a building permit could have just easily been issued for this expansion on that site, like, several months ago, without needing to come to the Planning Board.
So, they haven't constructed?
He cites a 500 square foot, he cites a 500 square foot expansion as a number that if it gets, if we exceed that, it requires a, it's considered a substantial expansion, so it did require to actually come back here to the Board.
Well, again, I was not involved in this one, and I, I'm just covering it tonight, so I have no clue what was done.
But there's no change in use or anything?
No change in use or anything like that. As we saw, what, a year and a half, two years ago, we did the expansion approval on the other side for the cleaning, cleaning area for the trucks. They're now looking for more office space on the other side of the building. I do know that.
So, I'm just, my only question would be on, it says incoming and outgoing parts. What are we talking for parts?
So, anything to like repair ready mix trucks or haul trucks, equipment that we use, and that's already happening right now. We just want a more organized place to put it, to, you know, receive and ship out.
Okay. So, what are some of the actions that we can take tonight?
Well, I think this is the first time it's in front of you, so you would need to find the application complete, and decide whether you want to either do a site walk or not, and then hold your public hearing. So, your next step would be to determine if the application is complete, and then decide whether or not you want a site walk and public hearing.
I have the, I have your findings of fact.
I don't even have the application here.
It starts out with the findings of fact.
Yeah, I don't have that.
I'll give you mine, since I have nothing to do with this one.
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
I got it.
Thank you.
Yes, James.
I got the findings of fact.
There's a plan, I believe, in there as well.
A black mark for James.
I got it.
Do you want to look at this plan?
I've got the plan. I don't, I don't have the application.
You didn't have the application?
I still don't have the application.
Here, you can have mine. I think it's complete anyway.
It's just one page.
Yeah, it's just that.
I just wanted to see it.
Yeah.
Okay, how would the Board like to proceed?
I propose that we find the application complete.
Is that a motion?
I move, yes.
Okay, we have a motion that the application for Ready Mix Companies is complete.
I'll second.
Seconded, okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Do we want a site walk?
I mean, I know there's been a lot of activity out on that site. I've never been out there, but you don't have to, I could just go out on my own and take a look, just to drive in, I believe. Weren't there issues with detention ponds and building things out, or am I on the wrong side?
No, that's the other one.
That's the other side of the street.
Then I don't need to go.
That's industrial drive.
That's a different concrete plant.
Yeah, that's another concrete.
I don't need to go.
All right, 21, do we need a public hearing?
I think we should have a public hearing, because we should, right?
You can certainly do that, I mean, it's your, it's your call. We do recognize you have fairly heavy commercial uses on either side of them. There's no residential areas around there or anybody that would be negatively impacted, but.
There is a little residence right here, but I think it's owned by that guy, right? Wasn't there a mobile home in there?
I think so.
Yeah, I remember that, because they had tenants or something in there. So, yeah, let's have a public hearing. March 19th.
Is that pretty much the consensus?
Sure.
Yeah. So, we could do a public hearing on March 19th. That give, does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, after that?
After that, we could vote the application, or we can vote the application, we can approve the application, findings of fact, after that.
Okay, that's.
And the findings of fact have been put together already.
They're done already, so.
James, James started those for you.
James recapped it, so.
Yep.
All right, thank you. So, yeah, March 19th at 6:30.
That's good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
This is Lee Jay's, though.
Oh, I'll hold on to that.
Thanks.
Next to new business is a sketch plan subdivision amendment for, excuse me, 241 Cranberry Meadow Road, map R 32 lot 15. It's in the R2 zone, and the applicant, the applicant is Hersam. I'll turn it over to the Town Planner.
Yes, you do not have a memo on this. I have been handling this one, though. Basically, the applicant will do the presentation for you tonight, but it's, it's an amendment to a previously approved subdivision where there's going to be another lot split. At this time, the only issue that I see, and I've had conversation with, with the designer, with Chris Mendy, was that the way the setback is established with the new lot line in between the existing lot and the proposed lot, currently encroaches on the swimming pool, but they haven't done any on-the-ground field work for their survey yet. So, I think they're waiting to find out where this is headed before they get that information going. So, I'll let Chris handle the rest of the discussion on this.
Welcome back. Good evening. Chris Mendy, Silver Consultants, I'm here on behalf of the Hersams. So, we identified the lots on Cranberry Meadow Road. It is, it was, there were two prior subdivisions in the neighborhood. This was the, the remaining portion of the parent lot for the subdivisions, and the owners are now desiring to split that. They weren't the owners at the time of the last two subdivisions. It's changed hands a number of times over the years. So, basically, the, the property is partly wooded, partly old farmland with a house on it. It has adequate area to support the division. It has adequate road frontage. I believe we can meet all the setback requirements. Lee Jay was referring to the swimming pool there. The location I've shown on the plan is from aerial photographs, so it's kind of plus or minus five feet or so. So, we may have to modify the location of one of the lines slightly to meet the setback requirement required for that. My, my primary interest in being here tonight, given that this is a sketch plan, is, I believe this would be categorized as a major subdivision based on the, the prior divisions that have occurred on the property. And my, my primary concerns with regard to what will be required for the application, given kind of the minimal nature of the additional development here. We have topography, two-foot topography on the site already. We have a boundary survey. We have medium intensity soils. I guess one question I would ask, are we going to be required to have high intensity soil survey for this purpose? We haven't done test pits for septic system yet, but we will, as, as necessary. That, that's pretty much it, I guess, just a little bit of guidance as far as what the, what the Planning Board might like to see in the way of the final, or the preliminary application stormwater, whether that's going to be an issue, whether we're going to have to do a detailed study.
I think I'd like to see test pits for septic on there, I mean, especially since it looks like there's such a limited building envelope, based on the setbacks and the well, the setback from the well, and you're going to, you know, have to put another well on there, so you're going to have setbacks from that well and septic. So, I think my biggest concern, and it has nothing to do with this at all, but for the future, for your clients, is the well being on the, their well being on the property line will pose a problem if they go to sell the property with appraisal. And that's just something that I know from being a real estate agent. A well within 10 feet of the property line will cause a problem with an appraisal. That's just if they ever go to sell.
Can that be mitigated with an easement, kind of an understanding?
I don't know. I know they get pretty, they get pretty particular about it, that's.
Have you ever run into that with a radius easement?
I'm, I'm, we've put wells on neighboring properties with easements and all sorts of.
Yeah, I've seen that stuff before, and I've, I've been hung up on deals because of this, but that has nothing to do with this. I would like to see septic test pits out there, though. Just make sure it's a viable lot.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure how to deal with that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we could certainly put a maintenance easement.
Are you the applicant?
No. I'm clarifying on that, I'm government-sponsored.
You got to come to the microphone, but what is your, dealing with this application?
I just have some information on the setback issue with the wells.
Okay.
As an.
Just an aside.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we have, we have viewers at home that need to hear microphones and, yeah, so.
Got it. Yeah, we can certainly, you know, put a maintenance easement around it or something if we can't reconfigure the boundary line to, to get a 10-foot, in fact, I can't remember. Again, that well, I think, is taken off aerial photograph at this point, so.
Yeah, 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 so something more accurate.
The location may not be exact, it's a preliminary, you know, sketch plan at this point.
Mike? Sean?
I don't have any, any questions on this one.
Just a couple more, I think. I'm just curious, on the way the front dimension is figured out, it's 142, and then you have another 17. Is that typically how that frontage would be shown, because the right-of-way jogs?
That's correct. I believe that the way I put that in there, though, is, I think the lot width is actually, I think, is 150 feet required.
Back at the setback line.
And I actually have 150 feet of width there for the minimum lot width as well.
Because I would think that that lot line would project straight to where it intersected the right-of-way, but the right-of-way is actually jogged.
That's correct.
So, now, you, it's like being on a corner lot. You get the frontage.
Right. Yeah, but I think, if you were to measure straight across from front corner to front corner, I believe the way I've got that in there is 150 feet wide, so the frontage is actually more than 150 feet, I think.
And I had the same comments on test pits and the well and this, that, and the other, but I'm just curious, we run into this all the time, and you always show the, especially where we're not going to do a high-intensity soil survey on this, I'm assuming we're, we're not going to do that, but maybe we are. Where you actually show well-drained and moderately well-drained, I'm often, I'm asking this only because you guys prepare these plans, is it worthwhile actually showing what that limitation is, that limiting condition for a poorly drained, for example, high-water table, or, you know what I mean? When you go into the soils maps, they usually define what that limitation is, if it's a, if it's a restriction on?
Whether it's, I'm not following you exactly. So, the soils classification system with regard to well-drained, moderately well-drained and so forth, has to do with depth to water table.
Okay.
Yeah.
But in all cases?
I believe that's, I'm not a soil scientist.
And I'm not either, that's why I'm asking.
But I believe that's correct.
Okay, that's just the point of topic I like to maybe talk about at some point in time.
Sure.
Because it would help us, obviously, if we knew what the limiting condition was, seasonal high water, ledge, you know, kind of thing, so. And I think that, that was all I had.
Okay, one, one more question. On one of the prior subdivision approvals, there was a waiver granted so that the wells could be within 50 feet of the property line, the front property line, as opposed to the requirement, I think the current requirement is for 100 feet. Given that this is part of, you know, this is a revision to a prior approval, could we ask?
Talking about the same subdivision?
That was, that was in the subdivision when it was originally approved?
Yeah, that was a condition of approval on the, on the recorded plan.
Well, if you look at this, I mean, the well is setback, the well, existing well is. is setback fifty foot from the front yard. It says it right on the plan.
But it doesn't mean that that's, that should, that it should be that way.
No, it doesn't mean that.
I think your question was, was that a waiver to get it to put there?
If you look at Note Seven on the plan, there's the waivers that were granted as part of one of the subdivisions.
Well, she'll be...
One of them is a reduction of the well setback from one hundred to fifty feet.
I'm not certain that we need that, but I'm wondering if that, if you folks would be agreeable to carrying that over.
I'd have to look at the notes from that approval and figure out why that was, why it was asked for and why it was granted.
Lee J, is that something that could be waived?
May not be.
I can look at the minutes.
Is that something that can be waived? Yes, that could be waived. What can't be waived in subdivisions is lot width, lot depth, lot size, because that's all controlled by zoning, and anything you'd want to do with that would be a variance from the ZBA. But in the case of a performance standard, like a well location or a road width or any of those types of standards, those could be waived. I'm somewhat intrigued by this. I wasn't around when that was done, so I'm kind of curious about, about that, but maybe we can find some information out.
What is the purpose for having a hundred-foot setback?
Well, of course, there's a hundred-foot setback from wells to septic systems.
But that I understand.
And I'm not sure, without going in-depth into the zoning ordinance as to whether or not there's anything, and I can do a quick, quick look, but to see if there's anything in here that your local standards say must have a hundred-foot setback from the road. I've never heard of that, but...
They do have it in the ordinance.
They do, Chris.
Yeah, my guess is it's probably something relating, you know, the thought behind it probably has to do with salt contamination.
Right.
But, you know, they don't give an explanation as to why the requirements are...
I'm just wondering. It's just an odd thing.
But where these lots are so small, they're, they're big lots, but they're narrow. Should we be requiring all wells and septics to show that we do have the hundred-foot and this, that, and the other?
That's why I would like to see a pit on there.
So, not just the building envelope, but kind of, you're going to have to propose kind of where the window is for each one of these.
That's why I'm asking about the fifty-foot in case, in case that becomes an issue.
It affects the building envelope, yeah.
And then if this was a major subdivision before, does this become an amendment to a major subdivision, or is, or are we just...
In my life and all the other towns I work with, yes, it would be an amendment. It's not a new major subdivision. It's an amendment to an existing subdivision. And that amendment, of course, when it's recorded in the registry, would be tied back to the original approval, so...
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, this, technically, if Chris is able to provide everything and you're satisfied, technically, this could be a one-meeting deal rather than a sketch preliminary final. It could be sketch and final.
So, come back in with his plan as he's proposing it, and it could be on the agenda for an action?
Correct.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
You have anything else for us?
Nope, I think that covers my, my needs for now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, in new business is a site plan review, Funeral Home Cemetery Road, map R thirty-six, lot forty-six. It's in the R-two zone, and the applicant is Lang Bibber Funeral Home. And Lee J?
Yes, you do have a memo on this one. This is a new applicant.
Did you prepare?
I did, and there's probably a hundred billion typos in it, so...
Definitely there are.
You won't miss that. Yes, the project, the project proposal is to construct a fifty-nine-hundred-and-sixty-five square foot footprint funeral home building on the parcel located across from the Evergreen Cemetery on Cemetery Road in Burwick. The five-point-eight-five acre lot is situated in the Transitional Residential District, which is the R-two zone. The new building will meet the fifty-foot setback front yard and twenty-five-foot side yard and rear setbacks. The lot currently is undeveloped wooded. There will be thirty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-four square feet of new impervious area, approximately seventy-five thousand square feet of disturbance, excuse me, created as a result of the development. This includes five thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-five square foot building footprint, as noted earlier, six hundred and seventy-four square foot covered drop-off area, and twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty, six-hundred-and-forty-five square foot onsite parking, and two new entrances for access to Cemetery Road. One of these will be located directly across the street from the northern entrance of the Evergreen Cemetery. The project requires a full site plan review per the town ordinances due to the construction of a building greater than three thousand square feet and installment of more than five thousand square feet of impervious surface. The project will require both a new private well and private septic system. The septic system will be designed by civil consultants using the test pit information gathered from Ken Gardner on November twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. The proposed septic location is yet to be determined. Per seven, Article seven, section seven-point-one-seven in the Burwick Land Use Ordinance, part of final approval, it will be, it would help to see the proposed septic system location and the separation from the proposed well, as we just talked about, a hundred-foot separation. Developments that create one or more acres of disturbed area shall meet the stormwater management provisions specified in Chapter five hundred of Maine DEP Regulations, Stormwater Rules. Since there will be less than an acre of impervious area, Chapter five hundred requires only the basic standards be met. The ordinance indicates and a finding be made that the applicant is considering the low-impact development, LID, that the board will want to discuss this with the applicant. Current stormwater design suggests that there will be one-point-four cubic foot per second increase in the stormwater coming off the site during a hundred-year storm. Although there's, there is no runoff requirements for specified storm levels, the site has been designed to limit the stormwater discharge off-site as part of this submission. Erosion, sedimentation control plan, and stormwater inspection and maintenance plan have been submitted as part of your application. Under waivers, there are none requested, and the next steps would be for you to eventually find the application complete, set the date for a site walk, and set the date for the public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Aliva.
Good evening. Again, my name is Jeff Aliva. I'm here with Civil Consultants, and I, with me also are the Bibbers here for the project. As Lee J kind of went through the process, we're proposing a new funeral home off of Cemetery Road. The site plan indicates the way we would like to have our access points coming in. One will be directly across from the existing entrance to the cemetery across the street. We have provisions there for parking for what we feel is, it's a little bit more than what the ordinance requires, but we want to make sure that we have enough for if there's a larger service. It's a single-story building, slab-on-grade. We have provisions in there for, potentially for a caretaker's apartment. Currently, at other, other facilities, they have a caretaker that, that lives there, that keeps an eye on the place. The structure's not used every day typically, so it's good to have somebody coming in and out and paying attention to that. As Lee J mentioned, we submitted for a DEP PBR, Stormwater PBR. I talked to Lucian, who is our DEP rep. He'll be sending over the signed permit when he gets back from vacation next week. And the question about, the comment about the, the stormwater and the increase, I'll kind of talk about that. I think it's a minor increase. In our report, we talk about what that does. But what I have here on this plan here is the blow-up of the site plan. If you go to the overall property plan and the drainage plans in, in the file, this is, this is our piece of property that we're working on right here. Our work cap ends up in this corner of what we have, and the remaining area of the lot is going to be undisturbed. Everything drains down into this lower section along this side. There's a big wetland at the bottom of the property that then just continues to discharge and go into another wetland as you keep moving, moving down and off the page this way. If we looked at the stormwater report, we kind of have three different discharge points, and they all kind of run down this side of property line, collect in this wetland that's on the bottom of the property. So, we have three discharge points. Our discharge points here and here are reduced. They eventually flow down into this side. It's our discharge point that comes off of this larger area because it's disturbed. If I sum all the flows, I'm around one CFS in a hundred-year storm. If I look at that and what that impacts in this wetland, this large wetland, the additional flow would be very, very small, you probably wouldn't even notice it in a hundred-year storm event. So, I feel that what we've done through kind of capturing what we have on the site design and the areas there that we address stormwater, we've provided a maintenance plan that talks about how the property owners are going to take care of that and make sure that the stormwater functions over the years. And the other item that we really need to do, finish up, is we're going to go back out and do some additional test pits for the septic system. When we first had the site, we went out and we located the wetlands, and we did a couple test pits to kind of think, see where things are. Once the design finalized, we knew where the well is going to be here. The plan shows a hundred-foot radius. Our idea is our septic system's going to be down over on this side, way away from the wells. The well, it's up here and handle that stuff. But we're working on that final design. Any questions, Frank?
Okay, so tonight, we're just looking to find the application complete. We're not making any decision on the application this evening, just whether or not the applicant has everything that's required to make this application complete. So, start off with Frank.
So, that's just like an unnamed tributary that finds its way down to the confluence of Coffin Brook and Mallory and eventually Ferguson.
Eventually, once it goes through all those areas, that works its way down on the backside of Pine Hill?
Yeah, Pine Hill Brook, yeah.
Yeah.
Pine Hill, I think it crosses all those boughs.
Um, the only question I have, and it's always intrigued me, because a good friend of mine, his family owned a funeral home out in New York State, and what happens to bodily fluids from the embalming? Where we're going to be on a septic system, are those like a red-bagged, red-tagged waste that has to be captured, contained, and then disposed of off-site in a manner?
I'm going to... Somebody come up and talk about that. The way we looked at it before, and I'm going to talk until I bring them up, is that, talking with the state, there's not a large amount of fluids, and it's not a huge impact to a septic system.
I realize that, but I, it's for my own curiosity, I just... Ever since I saw an embalming table, that I've been curious. I'm an engineer.
Hang on to it. You might need it someday.
If you could just state your name for the record.
I'm Richard Bibber. Bibber Memorial Chapels of Kennebunk Wells in Burwick. In wells, we are on a tank as well.
Okay.
Also with a well. That project was done twenty-five years ago now. Our Kennebunk facility, which we've had for eighty years, we opened that one, built that in fifty-six, and that was on tanks for years with a leach bed, and there wasn't any, any problem with that. Body fluids are going with the rest of the fluids as well.
Okay.
And that has worked well. Septic tanks are different. As you folks all know, they have to be pumped every so many years.
And they have high BOD concentrations. They're treated at the treatment plants, and I'm well aware.
So, that has not been any problem with our other facilities.
I just didn't know if you had to keep them in a containerized, like needles, so you throw them, you go to a doctor's office and see they throw them in a...
Needles and things like that in the safe containers and disposed of.
Okay. All right, thank you.
In a proper manner, as well as clothing and body fluids. The division clothing have to go into a special red bag, and they handle off-site.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Frank?
I'm good.
That was the only question?
I've been thinking about that one ever since I saw them.
You could have just gone over there, you know, saved us all ten minutes. Sean?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions right now.
You cool?
Nothing.
That seems pretty straightforward.
So, I just wanted to let everybody know, I don't know how many people are here in the public tonight for listening to this application, because we know that there was, I've heard through the grapevine, that some people had some concerns about this, the location. So, tonight, all we're looking at is whether or not the application is complete. We're not going to have a public hearing. We're not going to delve into anything else. We're not going to make any decision on it tonight. We have to schedule a, a site walk and a public hearing as well. And we might have multiple public hearings, but the public is welcome to go to the site walks as well. So, the next step here would be to find the application complete.
Just curious, how many public here are for the funeral home?
How many are here?
How many here are, are because of the funeral home being...
Yeah, but they're with, they're with me. The back row is me.
The back row is the applicant.
Somebody mentioned at a selectman's meeting that we are going to have great opposition to this, so that's all.
So, the, we would, the motion would be to finding this application complete.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, so the application we found complete, let's set a date for the site walk.
On the nineteenth.
The nineteenth, and this time, since we're turning the clocks ahead, we can set it to, do you think if we do five-thirty, that that would be plenty of time?
I would think so.
Yeah, we can come right here.
Afterwards?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, can you do the nineteenth at, at five-thirty?
Does anything need to be staked out?
I'll stake, I'll have the building staked out, and I'll have, I mean, the one entrance is known, and the other one I'll have just along the road that way, unless you want to see more than that, but I think that's...
Do you think the test pits will be done by then?
I don't know, but we'll try our best.
Jeff, maybe to give them a little bit of scale, if you can, at least set some corner stakes at the back of the parking that's on the side of the building, unless it's, you got any alders or whatever in the area there.
Yeah, yeah.
Just enough to get oriented.
Yeah.
What time did we say, five-thirty?
Five-thirty. Does that work for everybody? Okay. All right, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next is site plan review, Adult Use Marijuana Cultivation Facility, eleven-Pon Road, map R seventy, lot sixteen. It's in the RCI zone, and the applicant is CAF Realty of Maine. I'll turn it over to the town planner.
I'll be here for marijuana.
Town planner didn't handle this one either. The new town planner did.
The selectmen say bring on marijuana.
So, CAF Realty, C-A-F, has applied for a site plan and conditional use for an adult use marijuana production facility, not a retail facility, a production facility. A piece, piece of the lot is in South Burwick. It's the very back portion of the lot. If you... It's the very back portion of the lot. If you look at it, it's, there's nothing proposed for development in that location, but the town line does cross over there. Of course, the town planner for South Burwick is my executive director, so again, we have easy conversations, and he didn't have any issues or concerns with this. He was notified by James as soon as the application came in. So, the applicant, the applicant indicated they will complete the project in multiple phases. Phase one is a proposed to be forty-four-by-eighty-foot barn. Buyer-retention pond will be constructed to handle full build-out at, at the time of construction. Phase two will include up to three thirty-two-by-eighty-foot buildings for a total of eleven thousand, two-hundred square feet. A smaller buyer retention pond is proposed to be built during phase two. Evergreen trees will be planted on the north and south sides of the property. A detailed odor control and security plan have been submitted. The town has not yet received a memo from fire or police. The applicant has submitted an elevation of the proposed building and an image of smaller, smaller building example. A new rendering has been created for the larger building, which will be shown this evening. I believe they probably have it with them. There were remaining questions sent to MGS Engineering regarding wastewater, additional information on phasing, and a few other issues, and is prepared, and they will be prepared to answer them tonight. Planning board discussion and points of discussion determine application completeness. If complete, set the application hearing, uh, application, public hearing, and site walk. That is the extent of the memo. And they have provided a number of pieces of information in your packet, and I'm assuming they have prepared information to address any other issues that James had requested them early on in the process.
Okay.
Great, thank you. I'm Mike Seibert. I'm with MJS Engineering, and I'm here representing CAF Realty of Maine, and the owner's name is David Ayer. He couldn't be here this evening. He's out of town. And the operators of this... And the operators of this, this production facility or growing facility is, they're both here with me, their names are Jamison and Brian. And if there's any specific questions about the facility itself, I'm going to have to turn it over to them. But the property is approximately 18 acres, and it's off a Pond Road. It has about 500 feet of frontage on Pond Road. And then up in the upper corner over there, there's an existing building, there's residences in there now, rentals, apartment rentals in there. And it used to be a shop in there, now it's just going to be a storage facility for the owner, David Ayer. And he's just using that for his electrical company. The proposal is to build that access road from the gravel parking area up at the top there, down through the field there now, and put the buildings in this location right here. I'm showing that, the first building, the 44-by-80 building in yellow there. The idea is to build this first building, see how things go, and then build additional buildings as the second or third phase as we go forward. We tried to kind of get everything set up in the design, the access road, the parking, the utilities, and all of the drainage for the build-out that would be built at the first phase. And then virtually the only other thing that would have to be built in subsequent phases would be the building itself. The other buildings would only be 32-by-80. The reason for that is this first building has, has the offices and bathrooms and so forth in this first building, and that won't be repeated in the other buildings, it would just be used more for the growing and harvesting. I think that's about all I have. I can answer any other questions. I do have, I did bring a rendering that shows the size of the new building, so that picture that you have is an existing building that the owner, David, owns. It's at his property right now. We put that in there as a, to just give you the style of the building and everything, and this would be what, typically what the building would look like. Really minimal windows, of course, but exit doors for emergency access only. And then this would be the front that you'd see as you're coming down the road, that's the office area over there, and the parking is right out in front of that. And then these are just emergency egress doors out there. And then this would be kind of the side that you would see from Pond Road. Would have a metal roof, just like the one in the picture. And then I think we talked about, there was some question about, I mentioned David is a commercial electrical contractor. He has every intention to eventually put solar panels in this process, but not at the very beginning, just for cost purposes, so. That's kind of a little bit, maybe better explanation of the phasing. I can go into it a little bit more if we need to, and I can, you know, put that more in writing if we need to.
What was the date of the, the date that you submitted the application, do you remember? Was it Tuesday?
Since February 5th on...
It was, it was, we submitted it for the last meeting, but we were pushed to this, I guess the last meeting, James said was pretty full, so we were pushed to this meeting.
Okay.
This is signed March 3rd.
Signed March 3rd, yeah, which...
I have, I've had a copy hanging around on my desk for a while.
Okay.
But James was going to handle the review of it because of my scheduling, but it's been hanging around for a while.
Okay. All right, Frank?
Just looking at the tax map here, we're dealing, I mean, you highlighted in yellow, I'm assuming, all the butters that have been noticed.
Yes.
Is that a power line right of way that goes through there?
It is, yes.
This is going to be out of sight, out of mind. I mean, it's going to be kind of remotely in the, in the back. Can you just, when you look at this thing from a security point of view, people tend to travel along power lines, four-wheelers, this, that, and the other? So if you could take special attention to that possible access from the rear where nobody can see anything?
Sure.
I would like to understand what you might be trying to do there to safeguard that. And then the only other thing is, I'm assuming we're only looking at this phase one as part of this application, and because these would be substantial additions, he would be coming back into the planning board for those, whether he does it as a phase two or a phase three, four, and...
Yeah, so I would suggest that you're looking at phase one, which includes the first building, and certainly, as they've indicated, the build-out of the stormwater system.
Right.
But you could certainly, just to, to make sure that you've addressed it, you could condition the plan when we get to that point on each individual building coming back for approval. It doesn't mean it would be a highly technical review, but at least it would be put in front of you.
Well, Mr. Chairman...
Which we've done before.
Yes.
But my concern would be is, we need to learn from these facilities.
Yes.
They have annual licensing and...
Absolutely.
And we're on a curve here.
Yep.
And it would be nice to make sure every time something like that happens, we've at least figured out whether it was, there were any problems associated with it, or were there any that we're good about it that we can learn from, so.
I agree, and we've done that with other applicants in the past, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve it any other way, honestly.
That's all I have.
Sean?
I don't really have anything right now, no.
The only thing that I see right now, initially, just looking at the plans, is there's an existing house there.
Yes.
And there's going to, there's going to need to be, and I could tell you from all the experience that we have, considerable screening, a lot of screening. And the other issue too is going to be lights. We've had many complaints from a lot of these facilities that have gone in. They've done a good job on, on meeting the light, you know, the codes that we have for that, but you're going to have to do, you're really going to have to be aware of that. Screening and lights is going to have to be big.
And Mr. Chairman, I would, I would suggest odor control is going to be vital.
And that was going to be the next thing?
Yeah, odor, we have regulated in our land, so...
Yeah, just make sure you have a tight odor control plan.
Yep.
So this would be the largest one we will have had come before the board?
Well, not yet.
Well...
Proposed.
Proposed.
It says, no, because for right now, this is, this looks like it's just in line with everything else, but if there's the future expansion, yeah.
As it expands, correct.
I mean, you're going to have to spend a lot of money on screening.
You got it.
And we've required everybody else to do it, so.
Yeah, okay.
And then, you know, the code enforcement officer goes out there, checks the lights at night, so.
Looking at the odor plan that they do have, it does seem substantive, like it should be all right.
Did you, and then the other thing, did you get a letter from the police chief?
I haven't yet.
Okay, so we just asked for you to draft a letter to the police chief and let him know what's going in there. He's not going to say yea or nay, he's not going to even, you know, just tell him what kind of system you're going to put in there for security, and it's just for his officers to be aware of what's back there.
Okay, yep, definitely.
And this wouldn't be a gated facility, it would be...
It will be. So there'll be a gate here, so nobody will be able to get in there except the employees and the owner, of course. And then, I do have a fence showing around here, so there will be a fence, and I can elaborate on that, but it'll be all fenced in all around.
Well, again, it goes to that power line easement in the back there too, because, I mean, if the cruiser, cruiser could go in there, loop around a building periodically and come out, but he won't be able to do that, the way you've got it gated.
I mean, he, there's could be a code that he could have, and he could come down to there, turn around in that area, definitely. I don't believe that would be a problem.
Do you know if the chiefs use codes for anything?
Well, I mean, also the fire chief is going to, the fire chief is going to need to be, he's going to have to look at this plan and say, can I get my trucks around the backside of this building? And it looks like, I don't, you've only got a five-foot-wide gravel walkway.
Just, yeah, on that one side, I do, I brought, so that turnaround and that back area, that backup area in between the buildings are large enough for a fire truck and a dumpster, you know, a trash truck and all that stuff. If there's additional, I'm anticipating that there may be, need to be additional access, and that's why I left the opening in the, in between those buildings there, so.
So where, so where it says five-foot-wide gravel driveway and where those arborvities are?
Yeah.
What is that there?
That's a walkway to get...
Well, no, after the walkway to the arborvities, what is that? Is that, yeah?
That's just long, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I'm thinking the chief would want to look at these plans and say whether or not he can get around the backside, on that side of the building. It doesn't look like...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we were trying to minimize the impervious area and that travel all the way around there, but I don't, so...
Yeah, it's a life safety thing, yeah.
Well, of course, yeah. I mean, he, if I need to put an access around there, there's, you know, it's pretty wide open out there, so we can go all the way around, yep.
Never going to need to, yeah.
I have a question. Why are you creating and constructing a 450-foot driveway and pulling power and pulling everything back there, rather than building your buildings where you have frontage on Pond Road? Why, what's the purpose of that?
Setbacks. Setbacks from the school, there's a school...
So you're tucking it back behind somebody's house because you can't put it near a school?
Those are the rules, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Is that that thousand-foot rule?
Is that for daycare that's opening two doors down too?
So, I mean, if you look, there's the buff, there's the buffers here.
Yeah.
There are buffers here.
Okay. I just, it just looked odd to me. Yeah, nine arborvitie aren't going to cut it. And I'm concerned about just the distance, I mean, you're, I ride my bicycle there a lot, so I'm very familiar with this area. I'm very familiar with your house because I wave to you sometimes from my bicycle, and I don't even know you. But that's, that's like a very farmy residential area. I don't know. I mean, and I know, not until the public hearing you can't.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But save, but bring it to the public hearing. But, I mean, and I know, you know, you can't oppose things on personal preference, but personally, I don't prefer that.
Lee J.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to raise the issue, since I hadn't really been involved, but Jen and I have been sitting here talking, and you've talked a great deal about circulation for fire equipment and whatnot. I'm going to take it a step further, and I think some research is going to need to be done by the applicant on the building code side. We had a serious, fairly large-scale marijuana grow facility fire in Elliott not too long ago, and you're probably going to want to find out if these buildings are going to need to be sprinkled. The reason I raise that is because there's a well here, and so there may need to be containment or can, tanks, underground tanks with 10,000, 20,000 gallons of storage. That's right, on-site, in case there's ever a burn. So, and we handle, we handle the town of Elliott as well, so.
Is the site a wet site out in the back?
The soils are, you know, up in this area right here where we're putting this pond, they're elevated by a couple feet so that it's not wet up in that area, but the water table on a couple of the test pits we did off of that mound and down here is about 18 inches to 20 inches.
To go along with what you were saying, Lee J, you know, what about considering a dry hydrant in a fire pond situation? And then they could hook the pumper to that, and then they hook to a water gong, kind of a system on the side of the building to run sprinklers, because, I mean, I don't think you want that whole thing to go up and smoke.
I mean, whatever, whatever they would need to propose, if in fact the building code is going to require sprinkling...
He's hearing some things here tonight, he can go back and...
Absolutely.
And look at some of this stuff, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, so what we're looking at tonight is whether or not the application is complete, and we've got, I know you've got some work to do to look into as well, so we're just solely looking at whether or not the application is complete.
Does he need the statement from the fire chief and police chief for the application to be complete? I know we've asked that to be included with this foundation of materials.
We've asked that, and we should probably put that on there, but it's not in the current application, but we've always asked for that.
I think we ask it every single time.
We do, we do, and I think that's why it gets missed a lot, so it's not, it's nothing that you did.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just want to make sure.
We'll put, you know, another box in there.
Have reached out to them.
But are we looking two meetings out for a sit walk and that kind of...
Yeah, at least.
So it would give them plenty of time, possibly.
Whether or not we vote on the application being complete, yeah.
I know you're not taking public comments.
I can't, I can't take comments, right? I can't take, I can't take comments right now, now, I'm sorry, you could, you could...
It's on my list.
Okay, okay. And we will bring all that stuff up in probably four weeks from now, okay? We're just looking at application complete, completeness. So do we have a motion? I move that we find this application complete. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. I'll second that. Seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor of finding the application complete? Okay, slide zero, let's take a look here at, yes?
I'm just going to, for the public's edification, finding the application complete means only that they have submitted the information that's required of them to be submitted. It doesn't mean that it's, it's great application, it's, you know, ready to go, but they've submitted the information for the board to be able to start acting on the application. That's all the complete...
Good job application, now you, now they can be interviewed.
Yes.
And so what happens is, you're going to get another notice that there's going to be a public hearing once we schedule that, a sit walk. And then you could come to the public hearing, you could get all those concerns out, we'll take the questions down.
Come to the sit walk.
Come to the sit walk, ask those questions, and bring all those things up. If you have some concerns about this, I would just ask you to email James in the planning office. You could come in and see him, you could also come in and see Jen. I know you were mentioning something about South Burwick. You know, bring all these things up ahead of time, but, but for tonight, we were just looking at that, so.
Do we, do we notice South Burwick for that hearing, for that public hearing?
Sure, yes.
They had a butter?
Yes, they're in a butter.
Because we did that for North Burwick, correct, on the other one on the other end?
That is correct.
And we're definitely, and I'll work on it on Tuesday when I'm back in the office, we're definitely going to have to know if they are indeed opening a daycare two doors down. That is something that I will call Joe, who's on the boat, and find the answer before we go forward, because we, we have to know.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right, that, that daycare is in South Burwick, as we understand it, so.
They would get a notice anyway.
And then, right, but then the question becomes, you know, how does this, yeah, what is their ordinance, or how does the state law apply in this case, because it's cross-border?
Yep.
How are you sending the notices?
They come via mail.
Yeah, you wouldn't get one for this, you'll get one when we have the public hearing.
We haven't set the public hearing.
It'll be a registered mail.
So do you, do you want to set the public hearing, or do you want to wait until we get the answers that we may need? We can always cancel if we have to.
Yeah, we can always cancel. I'd rather set it and have it set in place, right? Because we're a month, we're looking a month out.
Yeah, yep.
And we're, we're going to get 10 more marijuana applications in that time.
Yes, yeah.
We're looking at April 2nd at 6:30 for a public hearing.
Sit walk, too.
Should we, yeah, do the sit walk the same night?
And then would you be able to do a 5:30 sit walk on April 2nd?
Yeah.
At the site, and please come to the sit walk as well.
And are there any features out there? If you heard from the funeral home, we were asking them to put some stakes out there so we can get, you know, situated, okay?
Yep, I can stake the center line of the road and the building.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other, anything else from the board? I didn't mean to cut you off, but we've just got to follow things, otherwise meetings get out of hand and everybody starts yelling, and we can save the yelling for, you know...
Four weeks, yell away, yell all night if you want to.
So please, please show up, please show up to the sit walk, and please show up to the public hearing. And so we're all set?
Yeah, all right, great.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Neil.
I see there are public comments, can we just comment about this Burwick and Jen?
Sure, bring it up.
All right, so here's the thing, do not shout from the audience, because we have microphones, because we have viewers at home, so you'll have to come up to the podium. Next on the agenda is public comment session. Next on the agenda is public comment session, it's open to any resident or property owner in the town of Berwick to talk about anything that relates to the planning board, so public comment session's open, please feel free to come forward, and just state your name and address for our viewers at home, we're a highly rated program on Thursday night.
They watch, I'm telling you, they watch, you'll read about it on Facebook.
So I don't have anything prepared.
Can you just say your name?
Heidi Levy, Leaven Perry's Way, I don't, and actually, I'm also co-owner of Pond Road, 13 Pond Road. I don't have anything prepared, and I just have been on the loop, so to speak, my husband was very sick, fighting cancer for two years, he passed away December 29th.
I'm sorry to hear that.
It was in the midst of that December that naive me, with my four children that live very close to the Kind Farms, that now will be 20 steps or so from the border of this property, I thought, how am I gonna get my Christmas tree this year? I thought, oh, there's a new farm stand opening right there on 236 Kind Farms, sounds wonderful, nice and kind, and I thought, oh, I could just drag it across, 'cause usually my husband does that, and I'm in bed and I'm Googling, and I'm like, wait, what? They don't saw in the trees I'm looking for. So I just was just caught by surprise, and I didn't even know what this, where the, what's the name of the one on the corner by, where, Salmon Falls?
Ochre, I can't.
Yeah, I'm like, I, I just, again, naive, I'm like, whoa, they do out there? So it's like, I can't look any direction from my property without it being, with this impacted, and I, whatever, do whatever you want on your own, but I don't wanna, it's tough, like, you don't want it in your backyard with them, and you don't want it in your front yard with them, and you don't want it to the right with them, where, where's Berwick going? I mean, we have no, barely any businesses, and this is what we're doing?
Well, and I'm glad you bring this up, because we get this question a lot, and so that, so Kind Farms has been in the mix for about three or four years, if you're, if you're in a butter within 200 feet, and I know it doesn't sound like very, it does, it sounds like a lot, but on Route 236, or Route 4, it's really not a lot.
Yeah.
So, butters were notified of that. The planning board, in our land use ordinance changes, we recommended to the selectmen that we cap the number of any marijuana places here in town at what it is right now, come the end of June, which is when the town's gonna be voting. They agreed with us, we have to cap it right now, because there's, we're hearing from a lot of people like you, that there's a lot of these businesses going in, and we need to take a little time out and see how everything affects us. So we have proposed to cap it at what it is right now, and then the town will vote on this in June.
Okay.
And the, the select board didn't really wanna cap it, but we really encouraged them to, because they really like the business.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe go to a selectman's meeting, too, they meet on Tuesdays.
They were receptive, though, to review those capping numbers annually, because some people will have staying power, the business will stay, some people will drop off, okay, they won't, you know, be a livelihood for them, but-
It kinda ran away, it kinda ran, ran away from the town, I mean, three years ago, four years ago, we had a-
A moratorium.
A moratorium, and then that moratorium expired, and then this boom just happened, and we said, we need to get something in place, otherwise, we're gonna be like the Mecca for Southern Maine of marijuana, and that's why we proposed that, and they agreed to that, they voted on it, so that's gonna be going to the townwide ballot referendum in June.
Yeah, I mean, just on our little street, I have a neighbor here, too, there's just three little homes down there, and it's a dead end, and just the traffic, just since they've opened, just coming down, our, our street just being nosy, I mean, I have a security system by E D T being installed tomorrow, I've had, like, very strange activity, Berwick Police are aware, they patrol my street every night now, so is, I mean, I know you mentioned the Berwick P D, but that, our little corner, that South Berwick line there is being hit hard, and is the Port, Berwick Police resource to be able to give us the security that we need in that area. I mean, especially when we go recreation, I mean, we're only seeing this just from medical, so when we go recreation, I expect traffic will even pick up more, and I, you know, I'm not really biased to the use, it's just I worry about, once we go recreation, what else the folks are using, driving in where, by my child's bus stop, you know, it's like, and it's not, you know, it'll, it's not, it's during those hours, too, we've definitely seen traffic pick up over there. I mean, it's not crazy, but, but we would have nobody drive down those, our street, I mean, it's three homes, it's a dead end.
Perry's Way.
Perry's Way. If you go down Circuit Road, there's like a three mil-
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
There's three newer homes, there's-
I love those homes in there, yeah, yeah.
There's a bit, one of them's South Berwick, the last house is South Berwick, but my property, both my properties, it's the, there's a diagonal South Berwick, Berwick town line, but I, my, they're on that town line.
Yep, okay, I know where that is.
Yeah, and it, we never see anybody, we know a license plate coming down that street, there's no reason to go down there, except for Dan in South Berwick, Paul or myself, and, I mean, we've got cars now going in and turning around and just poking around, 'cause I, I think they didn't notice we were behind, back there before, but now it's increased traffic, so they're like, oh.
Pond Road push all the way through to another road over in South Berwick, or is it a dead end?
No, it goes all the way up past Spring Hill to Agamemnon's.
Pies all the way back through, okay.
Yeah, tonight's Pond Road, right?
But my little Pond Road, my, my, that residence, it's just a, so Circuit Road kinda, by Dunn's Farm.
Yep.
There's Circuit Road, and then there's a teeny tiny, most people don't even know it's there, teeny, teeny, tiny road that just has two Berwick homes there, and, like I said, we were kinda hidden, and, 'cause people just fly by on Route 4, but now it's like people slop, have, are stopping, 'cause there's a business, and-
Well, the planning board has expressed some concern about the traffic and the safety on that whole Route 4 corridor, and I think the town has, the town fathers have indicated that the D O T has indicated, if we wanna do something out there, it's on our nickel, but I think we still need to have that discussion you wanna have with them, Dave, and-
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
And find out where we can get a little bit of horsepower.
Hear it from the horse's mouth, yeah.
Yeah, I just am so concerned that Berwick P D may not be, with so many of these types of businesses, kinda, may not be well-equipped to patrol at all, I mean, you know, it's, it's a, once people know it's back in there, it's a risk that I worry about, but-
And we can actually ask to have a representative from the P D at the public hearing, since we have some extended concern about that, I mean-
And maybe the fire, someone from the fire department, too, because of access in there.
Well, we got-
We can't talk about that.
Yeah, we can't talk about that application, and we shouldn't talk about that specific application.
These are conditional uses, and if you were here earlier, we had, a butter came in, made some comments, and the board addressed that and took that into consideration, so at the public hearing, any comments you have will be taken into consideration as part of the conditional use process.
Absolutely. Anybody else for public comment session?
This gentleman here wanted to talk about a well at one point.
If it's about an application that we talked about tonight, we can't talk about it, so, we're just gonna be very general.
I'm just capping off, Paul Amatucci, I'm on 12 Perry's Way, I live across from the Levy's. And I, you've heard from me before on this issue, when we were talking about this a few months or so ago, in any case, my issue is that here we've got this thing, and yes, there are gonna be public comments and all that, and I get it, but we are taking one of the nicest, quietest, most beautiful, peaceful areas in Berwick, South Berwick, and we are now turning it into a commercial marijuana area. Hallelujah, isn't that great? So, aside from all the other issues, the fire, the police, the traffic, the, you know, all that thing, the safety of our children, all those kinds of things, Nicole, how about property values?
Oh, yeah.
When people can stand on my front porch and look at the facility? Where is my property value going? It's going right down.
Yeah.
So, these are issues that, you know, maybe transcend the planning board, I mean, you get an application, you gotta do what's in front of you, and, but I think we really need to be very careful, really careful, so-
I think these are selectmen concerns, honestly, because you know, when we get an application, we have a, we have a guideline that we can go, like, I can't say, I hate this application, no, reject it, that's not what, I can't, but the selectmen are the ones that really are governing our town, and, and I said to them at their last meeting, we have a lot of public that don't want this, that's why we need to cap it, we, the public do not want this anymore, and they're, they, they only take so much from just us, we hear it from the public, 'cause we see the applications, and then we tell them, but going to them and talking, they've got public comment sessions, I think would go over, or at least make some kind of an impact, because they're really what's regulating what we can do.
But ultimately, they're the ones that move it on to the governing body, which is the town meeting format, or an ordinance, and we have land use ordinance amendments all the time, that-
So we make, we make the recommendations to change the land use ordinance, they approve those, and they put them on the ballot, so that's-
Right, right.
So you have to go to them, too, 'cause otherwise they think it's just us with, you know, coming up-
They think we're, we're fatigued, we're sick of dealing with marijuana, that's what they think.
So just the history of that corridor, the town had no ordinances at all, back in the early 80s, and we finally put a land use ordinance in after voting it in, voting it out, voting it in, voting it out, voting it in, okay, that's how it went, and it was around 86, I believe, was the window of time when that went in, but that whole Route 4 corridor from day one, on our, on that original map, has always been commercial industrial, rural, commercial industrial, it's always been that, so that's the history of that Route 4 strip, back when we put the ordinance in.
Anything else, sir?
That'll do it for now.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
See you next month.
Anybody else for public comment?
A couple more questions.
Sure, just state your name and address, please.
Chris Maces, 2386 Portland Street. Number one, there's a couple wells that are at least 100 feet from where they're gonna build a business, okay? That affects the people living there, I'm one of them, okay? I own nine and a half, almost 10 acres of land, a buttonet, okay?
Which, which property are you talking about?
What?
Which property are you talking about?
My property, I'm right across from my showing.
Okay.
Okay, anyway, number two, there's a pond down there, there's a stream that goes right behind us, that goes right into the pond. Number three, the waste, when they, when they take the marijuana out, what they, when they throw the rest of it out, lava's gonna end up on the ground, it's gonna affect, you got that other place going, had soybeans out across the street, that water washes over, they probably sell it as natural food, too, and also, the chemicals that they use, they're gonna use Miracle-Gro, anything they can use, if it can grow 24 hours, they're gonna grow 100 plants in 24 hours, because they're into it strictly for the money, nothing else, or else they wouldn't be doing it, okay? And then the property values is another thing, it's gonna affect everybody in the area, you know, and the thing is, people, people moved to this area, I moved, I lived on 12 and a half acres of land when I lived en masse, I've been up here 16 years, okay, the first thing I did, I went around to my neighbors, I introduced myself, I told them up here to live, not change things, and I never did change things, you know, 'cause I grew up in a country, the towns I came from originally had 600 people there, so it was a small town, but the thing is, I see up here, everything's going, I, I understand that, that's gonna happen, but the thing is, you know, people, they, they come up here to live, and they, and they let everything change, I mean, it's one thing if you got business that, that helps the town, helps the tax rate, I mean, our taxes are going sky-high, I'm retired now, I still have to work just to make ends meet, you know, I mean, that's the only cigar store in the, down the Kidry Trading Post, selling cigars or something, you know, trying to make ends meet the way things are going, but the thing is, people have a future here, and the thing, you don't find out till after you're sick, that the land is polluted or they dumped the wrong stuff in here, nobody knows what they're gonna dump in there, nobody asks them questions.
Make sure you come to, make sure you come to the public, make sure you come to the site walk and the public hearing.
And that's the thing, I mean, it's bad enough, we're gonna have people running around plotheads now, I mean, this basically happened, I've, I've met many of them in my life, believe me, and a lot of them that I've met, okay, ended up on drugs after, because that wasn't giving them a high enough. And that's, and if it's, and if it affects your kids, just like it does the kids here or anybody, it'd be a different story.
All right, thank you, sir.
And I think they're important questions, they look, they should be looked at.
No, we, we've got them, yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment session? Seeing anybody else come forward, close the public comment session, anything from staff? All right, next on the agenda is the adjournment.
Actually, actually, if I may, very quickly, if the board hasn't, probably hasn't gotten to you yet, I'm not sure how many of you are involved in transportation issues, Tom Reinauer, who has been the, the CAC's director, and the transportation director for S M P D C for 27 years, is leaving, he's done in two more weeks, and we have hired a replacement for Tom, he's actually going to the D O T as the deputy director of planning for the state, and we have hired a lady by the name of Stephanie Carver, who is currently my cohort at Greater Portland Council of Governments, and so she's gonna be joining us in a couple of weeks, and she will be taking over all of the transportation responsibilities for Southern Maine planning.
Frank?
Did everybody get one of these?
Yes.
I tried to figure this out, this is a solar kinda farm or thing you're talking about?
Yes.
It doesn't seem to line up with the, I mean, the lot that they, the address that